Man, that was pretty powerful.
So.
Holy moly.
Probably the executive session listed.
Who's running?
At least a personnel.
Is that those guys?
Yeah, they just, she just told me. They didn't know if they're ready. How many things are specific ones?
I think we have something.
So does one.
Yeah, I remember that's where we sold all our socials. Denver, who used to sell hogs out there.
Yeah, a lot of it is ice down in their drains and it was coming out.
Yeah.
Water, so the whole social started in the summer water. Now, anyone running, do open this.
Yeah. Just a really quick question. I think we have something on personnel side to probably discuss on the executive.
Yep, so we can discuss if it's, if it's a ballot, yep.
Yeah, so we should probably though when we have that then we have to stay for personnel.
Um, if, yeah, the, so what it looked like was, I don't think we knew that ahead of time.
Yeah.
So I just told Patty to put this.
Yeah.
So then Wanda can say we're going into executive session for.
For the.
Poor relief and personnel.
Yeah, okay.
So Patty, if you want to let Wanda know that, yes. Personnel and poor, poor relief.
I forgot my water, damn it. And it's in a bottle.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got it for lunch.
I don't know, all he did is called my office and said, you're it. Okay. Thank you.
Wanda's just gonna say, what do you think we weren't sure for tonight because we, so she's just gonna say which two.
On the last one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, usually we have the statute.
Last two on the right. And then the next one over.
These are added claims I forgot to give.
You said the last two on the right.
Yeah, those are the last two on the right. These are added claims I forgot to give.
Is it six o'clock?
We're live.
We're live? Time is six o'clock, I would call this meeting to order and ask all of you to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Wanda.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
John.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Does anyone have a reason to abstain due to financial or personal conflicts of interest?
No.
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 I do not. Item number four, approval of agenda.
Madam Chairman, Rob Stickney, our new veteran service officer is here. If it would be, we could add it to the agenda, maybe right at the beginning, just to have him introduce ourselves and take off. If that would be okay with you.
Or he, I, that would be okay, or he could do it during public comment.
Okay, that would be, that would work.
And my understanding is, in addition with regard to item fifteen, in addition to executive session, it's going to be for poor relief and personnel. Oh, and it's, uh, I've been advised that item number seven is not going to occur this meeting and it's going to occur in two weeks because Sheriff Chrissy is unavailable. With that, does anybody have a public comment?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Anybody second?
With the changes.
Oh, so one other quick change, are we gonna move item thirteen? Just because that was kind of Don's lead and he's not here this evening.
Does that make sense to the rest of you?
Certainly.
I'd make a motion.
No, number thirteen, the commercial.
With the changes and then the one that Ryan had with the elimination of.
And we'll move that to the next meeting. Okay, with those changes.
I will second that.
Moved by Heine, second by Mark Wort, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Now, public comment. Step up. To the podium.
Good evening, Commissioners, members of the public, those present and those listening online or watching on TV. I just wanted to.
Put your mic up.
Good evening, Commissioners, members of the public, those present, those listening or watching online. I just wanted to introduce myself, my name's Rob Stickney. I'm serving as your Yankton County Veteran Service Officer. I wanted to thank the Commissioners for placing their trust in me and allowing me to serve in this capacity. I look forward to serving the veterans of this community and their eligible family members for any benefits that they may be eligible for. Pending any questions, that's all I have, I just wanted to make it short and sweet.
Welcome.
You bet.
Thank you. So those of you who don't know, it's Staff Sergeant Stickney and he's a multiple overseas tours of duty, Iraq, Afghanistan, Poland, so we're happy to have you onboard.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
Anyone else?
Laura Nelson here, nor, excuse me, North Yankton. Just first of all, kudos, we talked about last night at our meeting with the roads. Kudos to snow clearing, snow clearing. Good job, good job. The other thing I want to talk about is that leadership training that was approved at the last meeting. I'm not sure if any of you are aware of who the speaker happens to be for that training. I don't know who decided who that speaker should be. Looking back at some of the packet, I think it was the first meeting in December, looking at the packet, the information on that gentleman, there's some interesting things that he talks about in some of his podcasts and videos that he has online. I took some time to listen to quite a few of them and just some interesting things that he believes. You know, it's, you have a worldview and no matter what you're talking about or what you're doing, how what you believe is the foundation and everything stems from that. And also too is qualifications, if you look on there, you know, if you're to spend the time and money to have somebody who has been there, done that with leadership and especially, you know, in the county setting, multiple people, I mean, I think the quote on one of his things was fifteen years of leadership discussion, not actual leadership. And so I think it's important that if you're gonna have, you know, county employees spending that much time listening to somebody to make sure you look into it, I know it's through RTEC, I believe, and I think RTEC gets it through Northeast Community College or something.
I believe we did authorize RTEC and NACO, it was the choice of either.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering who, you know, who approved this down the road for RTEC and things. But again, just, you know, looking into him and just looking at some of the things he's talking about, you know, pretty interesting, interesting stuff, so that's all I had.
Anyone else? Then public comment is closed and we'll move on to item number five, the ambulance quarterly report.
Hi Troy.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I mean, your packets, there was some information, probably start off with the ambulance quarterly report. There were some figures in there that I had printed up for you to take a look at, most of them in reference to what we had done in 2022. And as you can see from that, from that printout, that has the graphs on it here up at the very top where it says call volume numbers comparison. Last year and the year before, our call numbers increased by 4.2% each year. We did a total of 2,258 calls last year.
Wow.
And then the estimated revenue based on the calendar year, that's from our billing company from QMC. Total revenue expected for last year is $743,000 with about 179, almost 180 that to be yet collected. I did print this a few weeks ago, so some of that money's probably been collected since then. Part of the reason I think that the revenue was probably a little bit lower last year is because we didn't do quite as many ground transfers from Sacred Heart Hospital out to the other facilities and the biggest reason for that was because of our shortage of staff and the fact that we didn't want to be sending ambulances out of town and then have, start getting busy here in town and not have ambulances staffed and able to cover the nine one calls, so.
Troy, that revenue to be collected, that includes things that are out to be billed and those that we will probably never see a penny for, is that an accurate statement? So, you know, some people don't have the ability to pay, so that 179,000, we might get a percentage of that, but in likelihood, we won't get that whole amount ever.
Yeah, exactly, some of that is waiting on insurance companies to pay, some of it is just billing that's, that's out there yet. And yeah, you're right, some of that is, is stuff that just won't ever be paid.
What about the 55,207 from 2021?
That is, uh, some of that is probably uncollectible as well. I would have to look into that a little bit deeper with QMC, but I would say that that's a lot of uncollectible bills, people that weren't insured, claims that are being paid and that kind of stuff. If you look on the, now, let's go back on the, on the backside of that or the next one with the, with the two graphs there that show the payer mixed trip volume, and you can see that out of the calls that were billed by QMC, almost 50% of them were paid or billed to Medicare. So they're our biggest payer as far as ambulance calls goes. But if you look at the next graph where it says closed gross collection rate, you can also see that Medicare is one of the lowest as far as percentage collected. A big part of that is because they only pay a certain percent of the calls. When we bill an ambulance call, if it's a $1,000 ambulance bill, they pay $450 of it or so and that's all we can collect, we can't, we can't collect anymore from the patient themselves. So that's a big part of that. And then the payments by deposit date are down there for the entire year 2022 as well. But if you look on the, on the spreadsheet that I printed up for you, in that very first column on the top where it says total trips, you'll see that the grand total of trips that we sent to be billed out last year was 1,681, even though we ran 2,258 calls. That means that 25% of our calls were non-billable, they were refusals or no EMS needed calls. Still calls that we have to send an ambulance and respond to, but we're not getting paid for them. Refusals are essentially, uh, we get, we get called for a patient, but the patient doesn't want to go on the ambulance with us, they don't want to be transported, so we leave the scene without the patient onboard, without transporting them. They, they don't get billed for that. No EMS needed is the same thing if we get called for an EMS call, a nine one call that was called in by somebody else, we arrive on scene and realize that the ambulance wasn't ever needed, then we just turn around and leave again.
And we, we have no way to know about, we get a call, the ambulance goes, you know, like we're responding to any emergency.
Yep, absolutely.
That's, that's tough, yeah.
The thing is, you never know what you really have until you get there, you know, you get information over dispatch, over the radio, but a lot of times we find that the information that we get is not always accurate to what we find when we get there. So sometimes it sounds a lot more serious than it might actually be. A lot of times, you know, there's, there's people that are, that are calling nine one requesting an ambulance for somebody else. Just as an example, it actually happened twice today. There's a minor motor vehicle accident here in the city limits, usually. It gets called in as a non-injury accident, the police officers get on scene and as they're sitting there doing their investigation into the accident, somebody involved in the accident says, oh, my neck is starting to hurt or my, you know, my shoulder is starting to hurt, it's not anything that's real critical, but their policy is to call the ambulance up there to check that person out. And 95% of those, we don't transport, it's, it's either a no EMS needed or a refusal. So that's the kind of thing that's increasing our call volume, but they're not billable and so that's where we're seeing a little bit of that, that fallen revenue as well.
Troy, do you have any statistics on the lift assists that we do? I know that number is growing as well and that's, what is, is that $50 that we charge now?
Seventy-five dollars we charge, yeah, and we started charging for lift assists probably about five years ago because a lift assist is essentially when somebody is, somebody calls nine one, they've fallen, they can't get up, they're not injured, they just can't get up. And we've really seen an increase in the number of lift assists over the last five to seven years. We, we rarely used to do lift assists, hardly get called for those and, and now it's pretty regular. You know, several times a week, we're getting called for these lift assists. Those are billed at $75 per call. And that's where we started billing those at about five years ago, was at $75, that's never increased.
It's something we should look at doing as.
Yeah, and I agree, I think that, that we probably should take a look at what other services are charging for that. I know that, you know, when we set this up five years ago, I, there were places like Mitchell, I believe it's already charging $150 per call for that. We kind of set it at 75 at the time, but I think that it's probably time to take a look at a raise in that rate as well. We did raise all, a lot of our other rates this year as well. There was, I believe, a 5% increase in most of the rates, but the lift assist wasn't included in that because that can be kind of a hardship for some of the people that actually need the lift assist, you know, and it's, it's usually the elderly people that are on Medicare, but we can't bill Medicare for that, it's, it's a self-pay thing, so they have to pay that out of pocket. Any other questions on the, on the numbers on the quarterly report?
Are there any numbers on this report for times when transfers were refused?
It doesn't include that, if you look on, back on that first page that we were, that we were taking a look at where it says the call volume numbers comparison, and I went back to 2019 because that was the last normal year that we had before COVID came along and really changed everything. So in 2019, we did 251 ground transfers from Sacred Heart Hospital out to other facilities, most of them were to Sioux Falls, some to Sioux City, some to Norfolk, we did a couple, we do a few every year to Omaha. But most of them go to Sioux Falls, so 251 or around 250 ground transfers from interfacility or from, from Sacred Heart to another facility is pretty normal for us. You can see that number dropped off in 2020 and 2021 to about 175 both those years because the problem was that the hospitals receiving those patients were full, they couldn't receive those patients anymore, so Sacred Heart had to hold on to those patients here. And then you see a further call in that in 2022, and that's because we got to a point about the last quarter of the year or the last half of the year maybe where, because we were facing the staffing shortages that we had, we had to turn down quite a few transfers. The turnaround in that was that instead of having a ground transfer, transfer those patients out, a lot of times they would call in either a helicopter or a fixed wing to get those patients out. So, um, we've really, um, brought that number down in the last few years, but I expect that as we start getting back up to staff again, those numbers will start going up. You know, we want to be able to do those transfers for Sacred Heart and help them out as best as we can. It's just we haven't been able to in the last six months or so.
Aren't those ground transfers pretty lucrative?
Mm-hmm, they are.
Thousand dollars a trip on average?
More than that, probably twice that. A trip to Sioux Falls right now, keep in mind that what we would charge, excuse me, what we would charge is the base rate for the ambulance to come out, which is charged for every ambulance call that we bill and the base rate can be anywhere between about, about 600 to $800 for, depending on whether it's an emergent or non-emergent ambulance, depending on whether it's ALS or BLS. The only other thing that we can charge in addition to the base rate is mileage. Last year, we were at $18 per loaded mile, that went up 5% this year, so it's $18 and some cents now that we're charging. So here in town, that's not significant, you're only transporting a patient two or three miles here in town. When you're transporting from Sacred Heart to Sioux Falls, that's 90 miles at $18 per mile, so that's significant, yes. That's where a lot of the money comes in and that's probably why we're seeing a little bit less in the revenue this year is because we didn't have as many of those ground transfers to Sioux Falls.
How are we coming on replacing or filling those two slots that we had opened up?
The two EMT positions that were open that I talked to you guys about last fall, those are both filled. We have filled those with two full-time EMTs and they are on the schedule now and it's really helping us out during the weekday. Unfortunately, what happened is back in December, one of our full-time paramedics resigned and so that took out one of those positions. We hired two, but we lost one, so we're back to that one open position during the week. So we're filling the first crew ambulance fine, we're having trouble filling the second crew ambulance because, you know, we want to keep both ambulances staffed.
That's gotta really hurt transfers too, because we have to have a staff for emergencies and if you don't have a second crew, you really can't, you can't do transfers because you're saving this person's life. It's, it's a tough situation, it really, it really is.
It is, and we have to look at that, when they request a transfer, we have to make sure that we have enough staff in town, not to just be able to respond to a second call here in town, but it's been so busy lately that we've been having requests for third out ambulances and in some cases, a fourth out ambulance. And if we don't have the staff for that, we, we run into trouble. So I, I believe that I mentioned in the letter that we've been advertising for that paramedic position for two months. I have no qualified applicants for it, there are just no paramedics out there for the job. The EMT class that we have going on right now, just the online version, they're actually in class right now over at the ambulance office. Sanford has 150 students in that for the EMT class across the state of South Dakota, which is great, those are great numbers. But in Sanford's paramedic class that they have going on right now, they only have six students and they won't graduate until May. And, and for the most part, those paramedic students are already spoken for. They're not gonna apply for jobs because they already have a job waiting for them when they get done with it. The paramedics are just not available out there and so I don't anticipate that we will get any applications for that anytime soon. The plus side is that one of the full-time EMTs we just hired that just started with us a month ago, he's in paramedic school in Sioux Falls. So by the end of this year, he will be a certified paramedic and we can kind of morph him into that spot, but until then, we're gonna have to figure something else out and I think that the answer right now is that instead of hiring a paramedic, we're gonna probably have to hire more full-time EMTs to start filling in the spots and then we'll start working on getting paramedics back in there when they're available. Any other questions about that? Okay. I did mention in the letter about the paramedic, or the, excuse me, about the ambulance administrator position. This is the first time that I've been back in front of you guys since, you know, since Steve has passed away. And I just want to, you know, let you guys know, assure you that I'm, I'm taking care of everything there at the office until such time as you guys decide to get that position opened up and, and take applications for it. One of the things that I did mention in there would, I, I think it would be a good idea to include some of our staff in the process, just to kind of help out both sides a little bit, to, you know, help you guys kind of sort through those applicants if there's any questions about it and also to, to kind of give our staff a little bit of a voice and, and who's gonna be selected as the next leader of the department. I did have a suggestion for those, who those three members would be, because they're already on a hiring committee that we have over there. I've sat through them with many interviews for full-time and part-time staff and they do, they do an excellent job. Are there any, any comments, any questions about that?
I don't think not at this time.
Okay.
Thanks for the update and the.
And then the other thing, one of the other things I need to do is you had the invoice for Aero Manufacturing in the packet and I highlighted in yellow, uh, a change order that we need to do with that ambulance. As far as I know, that ambulance is, has been through the production line or the, I should say, the chassis. The chassis we ordered in October 2021, they just put it on the production line in December last year, so it took over a year for it to be into production. I believe it's probably in transit on its way to Aero Manufacturing now and then as soon as they get it, we'll take the other ambulance out there for the remount. They contacted me in December and said the problem, one of the problems that they're seeing with the new Chevy chassis is they typically install the siren speakers between the grill and the radiator, but now there's no room to do that anymore. So their answer is what you see highlighted in there is that they mount a grill guard or what we, we call a cattle guard in South Dakota, on the front of the ambulance and then they put the siren speakers on that, on that grill guard instead. But that is gonna add an additional $800 onto that, so I, I think, is that something that probably has to be voted on?
I think when they approve the bill.
Okay.
I think that's money well spent and I, I know we've had quite a bit of damage over the years and.
Yeah.
Hitting deer anyway, so maybe this will probably, the next year, it'll probably save that amount, so.
Yeah, absolutely, I think it's, it's a good investment as well. Okay. And as you can see, we've already paid 40% of that total cost of that remount, that was a down payment that was required, we paid that last year. And so what's gonna be remaining then will be that $92,835 when they get the remount done for us. Once we get it up there, it only takes about, about six weeks for them to get the remount done.
Are we gonna sell that other ambulance then, once it gets?
You mean the third one?
Yeah, their chassis.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a chassis.
Yeah, what are we gonna do with that?
I believe that's part of the trade-in actually, that's, that's part of what brought the price down. They'll keep the chassis up there and if they can use it again, they will, but it's got 180,000 miles on it, so.
That's something I think we need to look at though, because I, I want to say they only gave us like a thousand dollars for it and I know Mike has had really good luck selling RXS graders, making a lot more off of those than we thought. Where was that online you were selling at, like? Purple Wave.
Purple Wave.
This time, yeah, we'll go ahead with it, but next time, I think, you know, it is a, a diesel duly. I mean, I, I know we could get more than a thousand dollars for that, so for next time, let's look into that, so.
Okay. Any other questions about that then? All right, the last thing that I had on there was to talk about continuation of the discussion that had a couple of months ago, we were talking about the replacement of our emergency vehicle. Obviously, the circumstances have changed a little bit since I was here last time in early December, but this vehicle does still need to be replaced at some point and I think that for now, our window of opportunity that we had back in December has probably passed us by. The vehicles that we were looking at replacing it with are gone now. So the circumstances have changed back at the ambulance office too. Steve was driving the 2018 Ram pickup as a supervisor vehicle. I have turned that over to the paramedics to use in place of the 2006 and that 2006 Chevy is now sitting in the garage with the plow on it. And with the way the snow's been coming this year, we're just gonna leave the plow attached to it until it quits snowing sometime in June. So that vehicle is basically, the 2006 isn't being used necessarily for emergency responses right now, but we're gonna get to a point, at some point, where, you know, we're gonna need that back as a supervisor vehicle and we'll also still need the paramedic's vehicle to respond to as well as well. You can see on here, I kind of took a look at some of the, the fleet vehicles that are in the city of Yankton, in the different agencies and departments, Sheriff, Jail, Emergency Management, Police Department, Fire Department, and we have the oldest fleet vehicle by many years. Ours is, is oldest than the oldest vehi, older than the oldest vehicle by nine years, so it's, it's just, it's time to replace. it's time to replace that. In looking at some of the information online, the general recommendation in the industry, in the emergency services industry, is that light fleet vehicles like pickups and cars should be replaced every seven to ten years, and we have a seventeen-year-old vehicle now, so it's going to need to be replaced, but I'm not in a huge hurry to do it right now. I think we've got some time to kind of sort it out a little bit before we get to that point. And so down at the bottom of that page, you can see that our current balance to get a new vehicle is a hun, at a hundred and twenty thousand, but we have to pay that remount out of there, so we'll have a balance of about twenty-seven thousand left in there that we can kind of start to use towards that. So I don't have any recommendation of, of replacing that vehicle right now. I think that we'll just kind of put that on hold until we get a few months farther down the road when we really need it. I am, I am still responding to calls, to supervisor calls when needed. But I'm just using my own personal vehicle to do that for now, so. It doesn't happen very often, but when it does, I've got a way to get there, so we can, we can look at another replacement vehicle down the road. Guys, have any other questions about anything?
Move approval of the ambulance quarterly report.
Second.
Moved by Clemish, second by Markort. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against?
Thanks, Troy.
Thanks, Troy.
Thank you. Now we're on to item eight, the approval of the January seventeen, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, do you want to do six, item six?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had a line through it, my bad. Let's do item six. Mr. Solacek. Up to you.
Every year, we go through a bidding process to get supplies and, and a few projects under bid. We bid hot mix, cold mix, fuel, rock, riprap, crack sealant mastic, crane work, asphalt oil, prefab modular bridges and culverts, mag chloride, bridge decking and box culverts, chip sealing, contract hauling and contract services. I guess we opened up bids last Wednesday. I felt we had pretty reasonable bids. There was a few high ones, but.
What were the high ones on?
Rock and riprap.
There was quite a difference on them.
Yeah, and then some of the chip seal bids were on the high side.
Did we only get one bid for fuel?
Only one.
Really?
Well, we did get two, but the second one didn't show up until after bid opening.
Was it, was it lower?
No.
Okay.
Fuel, I feel pretty confident in our price on that for the year for gas and diesel to the Yankton shop. That's really realistically only up, it's like fifteen cents from last year.
Two ninety-nine for gas, number one diesel, three fifty-five, number two diesel, three fifteen.
Yep.
Better than I thought it was going to be.
And the number two, that's pretty much what we run year-round. I always bid number one, just in case we ever want to. The Lesterville and Irene shop, we run number one year-round, or not year-round, all winter long. Them shops are not heated, and the tanks are above ground.
What, what's our capacity out here in Yankton's?
Ten-five, I believe.
So we can take, we take it in at a tanker at a time?
Right. And our contract was up January thirty-one, so I made sure on January twenty-five we got filled, so. Other than that, I, I feel like the rock and riprap, you know, Spencer Corey's, they're in line, they're not much more than last year. Crack sealant was, oh, I want to say like eight cents a pound higher than last year. For the bridge building with crane work labors, none of them prices went up. They just added a few more pieces of equipment to the list. Jibro, the MC seventy, which is a tack oil for, which you spray down before we lay the asphalt, that went up about a dollar. Other than that, MC three thousand, that's, that's your chip seal oil. That went up like forty-five cents.
Is Jibro the only bidder for that?
The only, the only other bidder would be out of, up by Minneapolis somewhere.
They didn't, they didn't put a bid in.
Prefab bridges and culverts, True North, they're a South Dakota company. They're the only South Dakota company that offers that, them components. Mag chloride, we haven't used that in a few years, but with our asphalt project this year, we may have to look at putting some down. I, I'm working, I gotta get with the township and, and okay it with them, see if we can use a township road instead of going all the way through town. Bridge decking box culverts. Recommend approving all three of them companies, just in case there's, if we come across something throughout the year where we need something now, and one doesn't have it, we can go to the other. Chip seal. That is probably up five hundred bucks a mile, which I think is very reasonable.
Now, did you mention that there was a typo on the approval recommendation for annual supply?
Yep, on the, on the approval recommendation.
Somebody was forgotten?
I forgot hot mix, cold mix for Knife River, so we'd add that to the approval list.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Solacek?
Make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, uh, what was it, the annual bids, I'm sorry.
Twenty twenty-three annual bids?
Annual bids, yes.
Second it.
Moved by Clemish, second by Heiney to approve the annual bids. All in favor, say aye.
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 All against? Nay. Motion passes four to one, four to zero, I'm sorry. All right, now we go to the, approve the twenty twenty-three bridge inspection resolution.
And this, every year, we have to do that. We pick our consultant off the list. The consultant has to be off the list. That's who is approved through the state of South Dakota. In the past six years or so, we've used IMEG. I recommend we continue with IMEG since we, they are invested with us with our Jim River bridges. So.
I think they've done a good job. I really like how thorough their briefings are, and they've really helped us and the public just understand the pretty serious situation we're in with our four James River bridges, so.
I think they should put more pictures in their presentation. So people really know what the bridges look like.
Yeah. Need a motion to approve the resolution?
Yep, need a motion to approve IMEG for the twenty twenty-three Yankton County Bridge Inspection Resolution.
I move to approve IMEG for the twenty twenty-three Bridge Inspection Consultant.
Moved by Markort, second by Clemish. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone against? Say nay. Motion passes four zero. Now the Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement.
Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement, this goes back, we were awarded PE grant on Fleeg's Bridge back on, while the agreement was finalized August twenty-seven, twenty twenty with the state for the PE grant. It gives you three years to complete the PE grant. So we're kind of waiting on the state with Fleeg's Bridge. Bridge is kind of tricky. We met out there last August with the state, IMEG. Anyways, for the TSNL meeting, TSNL is type, size, location. Well, with the issues, current issues that we do have with Fleeg's Bridge, with the scour on that southeast corner, and along with the railroad bridge, no decision was made at that time. And the state is, state's thinking we're going to have to work with BNSF to figure out a solution on what we want to do with the new, what size, what, what type, you know, how many span. So we do not affect the railroad bridge. So this is, this extension, I guess, is due to the state.
PE extension. And Mike, just for the public, can you go over all the, the applications we have for, we have one out again for Stone Church that we were, we were awarded that grant for, what is it, almost four million dollars? Our bids came back eight million dollars. What are we going to do? So we've reapplied for that grant as well.
Well, we were able to keep.
Keep it in, applying for more money, basically, because we can't come up with four million on our own.
So just as clarification, so if we get this second big grant for the Stone Creek Bridge, do we get double the money? And maybe have enough money then to replace it?
Well.
In theory?
We're hoping, we're, we're hoping to get more than.
I mean, they're going to, in theory, add money on to the other grant?
Right.
Okay.
It'd be great if we could get over, over the eight million cap, but that is up to them.
But this, this bridge improvement grant that you have in front of us now is just the extension for Fleeg's Bridge preliminary engineering, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement Extension for Fleeg's Bridge.
I'll second that.
Motion by Clemish, second by Heiney to approve the Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement Extension. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Say nay.
Thanks, Mike. Last night, I think we, all of us heard a great job that you're doing on the road, so keep up the good work. We really appreciate it. Give the guys our regards.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Does he need this today? Doesn't take me long to sign. All right, thank you. Now we're moving on to item eight, which is the January seventeen, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections?
Aye, so move to approve the January seventeenth minutes.
Second.
Moved by Markort, second by Clemish. All in favor, say aye.
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 All against? Say nay. Passes four zero. On to item nine, twenty twenty-three Wage Resolution.
That's just a yearly thing. You have to be, it has to be advertised and approved.
This does? So is it, do we, do we need a motion to?
Yes.
To advertise?
No, to approve.
Okay.
I so move to approve the twenty twenty-three Wage Resolution.
Do I hear a second?
I guess I'll second that motion. I mean, we.
Moved by Markort, second by Clemish. Aye. All in favor, say aye.
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 All against? Nay. Motion passes four zero. On to claims.
Just wanted to point out when, what page is it, Juvenile Detention, I believe was eleven thousand dollars that we had to pay. Just so you guys are all aware, it's extremely expensive to house juveniles and.
Do we know how, do we know how many that is?
It'd be two hundred and fifty dollars a day, I guess, divided by that number. I'm not sure on the amount, but it's, was caught my eye when I said holding only, that is a lot of money, and we have no choice. We have to pay it, and there's nothing we can do about it, and we can't budget for it because we have no idea how much it's going to be. But for this month, eleven thousand dollars.
Any other questions or comments about claims? Do we need to do these separate?
I'd make a motion to approve the claims, all the claims.
I'll second that.
Moved by Clemish, second by Heiney to approve all claims. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone against? Say nay. Passes four zero. January twenty twenty-three payroll.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Clemish, second by Markort. All in favor, say, wait, back up. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone against? Say nay. Passes four zero.
Do we usually do a public comment in the middle like that?
Okay. We have a second public comment opportunity. Step up to the podium.
Look, Johnson Volin. I got my tax notice in the mail the other day, and I, I noticed something, and I'm, I'm paying some money for the Mead Cultural Center. And then I went to work, and I sit in the road there all by myself, so I have plenty of time to think. And I got to thinking, you know, it's kind of amazing, we can put a tax on to save memories from our grandparents, but we can't put a tax on to build a bridge so we can get to the damn museum. Another thing that crossed my mind, selling grain this fall, I noticed that when there's a lot more demand for grain in the area and not as much demand, the price is a lot better. And I also know the people that are grinding feed for all hog confinements are paying right up there. But for us to get to that market, we either have to go up to forty-six and come back down, or drive through Yankton, and then go back up to get out there. Too much screwing around. It, it's not worth it. But that's money that could stay in the county. And I just never did understand when money was one percent, why we just didn't borrow the damn money and put the bridges in. I mean, we opted out for government center and a jail and everything else, and we do it for schools all the time. Why can't we have decent roads? And bridges? And I mean, it is frustrating when you've got a truck that's got seven axles on it, but you can't haul over eighty thousand pounds, or you can't haul over sixty thousand pounds, and you're legal for what, ninety-two? And you're paying for the tonnage tags and everything else? And that's enough on that subject. The other one is, yes, we would love to have a sewer system out by the lake. We spend money on doing studies, and we know that we're not going to have the money to do it, so has anybody looked and thought about bringing a business in that has a need for a big sewer system that could fund most of it? If you want the county to grow, that was another interesting thing I read the other morning. Yankton County is the eleventh best county in the state of South Dakota to live. And the three top places to live in Yankton County are Yankton, and they had a score of, a grade of B-plus. The next one was Walshtown Township, and the next one was Mission Hill Township. And they both had B-plus grades also. And don't ask me who did the study, what they based it on or anything. Don't know. Don't care. Found it interesting. Yankton, or not Yankton, but South Dakota did slip from the number one most corrupt state. We're down number two again, so we'll have to try harder next year.
Who moved up?
Huh?
Who moved up?
I, I can't remember if it was North Dakota or who beat us out, but, you know, we just have to work a little harder on it, but. And I'm just tired of all of the negativity. I read another interesting article that stated that if you base your economy on on a retirement community, it's not, don't expect miracles because people over the age of about sixty-two do not get any enjoyment out of spending money. So they don't. And you look around and there's a multitude of things that we used to have that we don't have anymore. And unfortunately, you know, there, there are jobs abound. Another thing that is a pet peeve of mine, I haven't been here for a while, John, so this is stored up. Everybody wants affordable housing. So what's the first thing we do? We go out and we micromanage it with zoning. And every time you come up with a new rule, oh, tack it on to the end cost. Well, maybe if government got the hell out of the, 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 the building process, housing would be more affordable. And anyway, that's enough for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Now we're gonna go on to item twelve. The proposed vacation of a road in Odessa Township.
Sure. I'll go ahead and take this one and I'll just be clear off the bat. I, um, nothing's gonna happen tonight. This is just a conversation to have, um, the road in question, uh, that is, I believe, the Northwest Jim River Road that's been closed since, it's at twenty eighteen. Uh, it was damaged in some flooding and, uh, the road has fallen apart and I believe we owe the citizens of Odessa, we need to, township, we need to say, what are we gonna do with that? Are we gonna continue to leave it closed down? Do we wanna put it on the list to be fixed or do we not want to? I mean, it's been, it's been five years. I know we have a bunch of people from Odessa Township here and, uh, I guess I would, if it's okay, ma'am, share, open it up and let's get some public in, input on this and, uh, see what they have to say.
Certainly. Who wants to step up first? Don't all rush to the front.
I mean, yeah, and, and nobody wants to ever close a road. Why, why would you want to do that? But, uh, funding is short. Um, we're trying to scrape every penny we possibly can to fix Stone Church Bridge, uh, if we get another grant, so it's, it's tough, but, um.
Isn't that road?
Are we able to pull, Gary, can we pull that road up on the map and the overhead just to, to give everybody an idea? And you, and you loc, the local guys, I, it's been a few months since I've been up there. The majority of that road is collapsed, has it not? Into the? Well, it's, it's, it's not safe for vehicle traffic at this point, correct? Is that a fair assessment?
It's my understanding that that's the road that the county used to use to go to travel on.
Yes.
So now because of the closure of the road, the county has to go, much like Mr. Johnson was saying, around and around and around.
Yeah.
Up and down. I'm sorry? You have to step up to the podium because our at-home listeners can't hear you. You have to say who you are and then share with us your thoughts.
I'm Paul Fisher. I just live on two hundred and ninety-fourth Street, just south. Yeah, it's the gravel pit, um, route. It used to be the bus route, but it, there's no kids on that route no more, but.
And so are you for or against?
I want it open.
You want it open?
gravel trucks go past my place. My neighbors don't like it. So that's my point on it.
Okay. What about the gentleman that came with you? Are they for or against?
They want it open, yeah.
Mark Fisher, I live just east of the washout area there. Yeah, it's, I want it open. I mean, it's been a while since it's been there, so, and crossed the river a couple of years ago here, they put in a million dollar bridge over there. And they can't spend ten thousand dollars to fix this hole. They got offered back when it just happened, somebody offered them ten thousand to fix it and they turned it down.
When you say they offered, they offered who, the county?
The county.
Yeah.
Yeah, they offered.
Yeah, I was on, I was the James River Water Board. Uh, yeah, we had a grant to replace this in twenty eighteen and that, that's since expired.
And you turned that down?
I wasn't on the board at the time.
Oh, okay.
Um, but, uh, that could be applied for again. But I don't know. Do, Mike, do you have any estimate on what you think it would cost to repair that road?
And Mike has to step up too.
Realistically.
As of right now, do I have a hard estimate? No. Um, back when we had an engineer look at it, I would like to have it revisited, um, just for the fact that the assumption was that it was erosion from the river. Um, I, I feel that, uh, it wasn't erosion from the river. I feel twenty eighteen was a really wet fall. And then, uh, the saturation of that and then twenty nineteen was super wet again. Well, that twenty nineteen, well, twenty eighteen is when it started to slough. Twenty nineteen, it went a little more. Um, twenty twenty, I walked the, the riverbank there. Um, I counted five springs coming out of the hillside. So I do feel that was a huge factor with it sloughing off, um, being, with twenty eighteen fall being wet and all of twenty nineteen.
And the county?
West.
Along with the springs coming out of the bank, I guess.
Just so I'm clear, the
Down.
road that is fallen away can be repaired, yes or no?
Yes.
And if the road is repaired, is that a shorter distance to the gravel pit that the county goes to or a longer distance?
It would be, uh,
Or more convenient?
I would say probably close to about the same distance, if not a little shorter. Um, maybe a lot less wear and tear on our trucks, um, a lot less grading to do with the motor grader, um, because the other direction, no matter what, we have two big hills to pull and it's, it's always nothing but a washboard from going up and down with the low ones, but.
So that's extra cost to the county to do the maintaining?
And, and I think the first, first option, we should look at rebuilding it, but when we do this, I, I think we need to be clear, you know, be sure that if we do rebuild it, the next big flood we get, we're, it's not gonna do this again because you guys are, you guys have all grown up along the James River. This stuff happens and I know we, we've dealt with, uh, a number of these roads up in Spick County on the James River where they'll redo them and, uh, they'll get another flood and then they keep falling in. That's a pretty steep bend in the river. Well, what nobody wants to happen is we don't wanna put a bunch of money in here and then two years later it all falls in, because then we're in the same boat.
Can we apply for another grant?
Yeah, that should, that shouldn't be an issue, but I, I think we need to be, i- if, we, we need to decide if we wanna look into this further, we probably are gonna need to, to study it and make sure if we do repairs, it's gonna be money well spent, that this road's gonna last for a while. If, if we're building on quicksand, I, I don't know if it's the best use of tax dollars, even though we all want it. I guess, is that, is that fair to you guys? I mean, you guys wouldn't want us to, to put a bunch of money in it and it falls in two years from now?
I, uh, twenty years ago where I live, I live right along the river, my cattle yards, I had my stake washed out. And we rebuilt it, me and my brothers and I did. And we dumped concrete. We built it up just with our own equipment. And then we dumped concrete on the other side because they, you know, to keep it from washing away. And it's still there yet today after nineteen
True.
with the flood. It came, the water came over the top of it, but it's still there yet.
From twenty nineteen?
Yeah, from that flood from.
So you guys think you can do it?
Yeah, I got a cousin, Jason Fisher, he, he's got some big equipment. He could do it. And I know Craigman only, he, he offered it for a lot of the concrete. He has a lot of concrete he could dump in there.
We, we gotta be a little, you know, in the channel though, you, the county, we gotta be careful what we do. We have to follow with the, the core engineer four oh four permits and, yeah, well, you know, you know how long that takes and, and that was in the, was it the nineties you said or when did you do that?
It was twenty years.
Twenty years. There's not less rules now, unfortunately, so.
Yeah, well, you still can't dump iron in the river, you know, I know that, but.
Anybody else have a comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jody Klute and my husband and I and one of our sons own the land on both sides of that road. And, yeah, on that, where, where it fell through.
Okay.
And contrary to what, um, rumors were going around, I don't like the gravel trucks going by, but did I stop, would I stop the road being fixed? No. We would like to have the road fixed too. Our son, like I said, we have to drive all the way around to get to our son that lives just over the hill, or we go over the hill and we have made our own road going that way, which you can only use at certain times of the year and at certain things. It has been an issue and not only the hassle of having the road closed, we have turnaround traffic in our yard that is absolutely unbelievable. And it's not just that they turn around at the end of our driveway. People drive through our circle driveway to get back out when they realize that they can't turn around there. During hunting season, and I get that it was hunting season, but the state bought land that is right beside ours on the river bottom. There were twenty-two cars that turned around in my son's driveway on one day, one day during hunting season.
Some good hunting area.
It is a good hunting area, but it's a gravel road. We own the land on both sides. They can't hunt there. So they shouldn't have been there to begin with. And I'm sure that the other neighbor, uh, Clayton Carlosoka, I'm sure they have trouble with people driving through and around in their yards too. It needs to get fixed or it needs to be abandoned so that we can do something with it so that it, it stops. And I know you guys have offered to fix it. Jason offered, we had, we have had meetings on this in the past. And, I mean, we have a dozer, we have all this stuff too, that we can do the same stuff everybody else can. We asked at a commissioner's meeting, if you recall, what would happen if we fixed that road and opened it up? And my husband and I and I, our son, would be liable if anybody got hurt there. We're not willing to take that risk. We wanna see it open too. We really do, you guys. I mean, yeah, I would appreciate it if you slow down when you go by my place because we're close to the road. And that is a problem. It really is. When I have grandkids out playing, I hate it. But would I stop the road from being, no. And I find it hard to believe that the whole county would go according to what I would want anyway. Really, think about it. Think about things that you'd want fixed. Would the county change it? I doubt it. I doubt it very much. My husband remembers when it happened last time. It was many, many years ago. And it stayed for a lot of years, a lot of years when it was fixed. But it is a lot of money and we get that. But it's also been a long time and it's been long enough that either it needs to be fixed or it needs to be abandoned.
Yep.
And yeah, we'd love to let our neighbors drive through. If it's abandoned, we fix it ourselves, but we won't because we can't.
And in the meantime, while I guess we're assessing this, uh, do you want some better signage out there so people aren't turning around? I think that's the least we could do.
When it first happened, I would go out and I'd set up the sign and I'd put the bag, the sandbags back on. And after a while, and, and I know you guys have been working really hard on the roads, but after a while, I mean, even the road grader would come out there and he wouldn't set up the sign. And I'm thinking, this, this makes it my responsibility then, and it's not gonna be, because I don't wanna be liable for it. And I could see that happening also.
What did your sign say?
Well, he wants the exact same thing we do. Open it. If we can open it.
No, 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 no. What did the sign that you were setting?
Sign, road closed.
Oh, okay.
Road closed sign. And it, there was one at the beginning by the highway and, well, that's been down since, I don't know, November, maybe? Yeah, I mean, a long time. It's, that sign's been gone and it's under a snow pile now. And the one that's supposed to be bigger that goes across the road, people drive around it and, and then they get to where the, the road blockage, you know, where they've got big cement blocks, so they can't get through there. And then they, which is a dangerous spot where they're turning around there and then they come back down or else they're turning around before they get to the sign in our yard. So, yeah, I mean, I would think it's a terrible liability for you guys, for the county. If somebody runs into that sign, it's got big metal posts holding it up, you know, um, that are supposed to be holding it up. But those posts are the ones that are sticking straight up. Even now, you see maybe about that much of them sticking out of the top of a snowbank. Somebody could go barreling into that with a pickup or a car and they would be hurt very badly, if not something worse. And then whose responsibility is it? Is it the county's to pay for that? That's major. I guess that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Then we'll call it public comment on that is closed.
I guess my thoughts are, nope, everybody wants this open, right? So let's look into it, Mike, on the feasibility of fixing this. But in the meantime,
Put up a sign.
Get some better road closed signs. Would that help you guys out? Probably closer to four thirty-first. Is that kinda where you guys want, uh, four thirty-one? Everybody okay with something like?
Even your GPS, you know, that's a lot of it because with it being the way it is, the GPS shows that it goes through. So people are coming to go to one of the Fishers and they're coming right there, both. They can't, they can't turn around with a semi on a gravel road.
So, so, uh, road closed sign closer to four thirty-first, that would help you guys. Is that something, we should be able to do that? No problem. Okay, is that?
Got some of those on hand.
That, that was easy. We will.
Easy temporary fix.
Yep. And we will continue to look into this, this, at least this brings us up in visibility, you know, it's just been closed for five years and we owe you guys an answer for it.
Yeah.
Even if it's not the one you want.
You know, and speaking about the GPS thing, that's a very good point. Um, do, are we getting that information out to those maps, those online mappings and stuff like that about, uh, this is a dangerous situation where we have a road that's closed and, is there anything that we can do as a county to make sure that those things get updated more?
Is Paul still here?
It can be a struggle for a private citizen just to get those things updated.
Right now, I don't think. Paul would be the one to talk to and I know there was some roads that, some new roads that were created in Mission Hill and we had a heck of a time working with Google to acknowledge those roads, so he'd be the one to talk to.
Between Google and several other companies that host these online maps, that's, it can be challenging, so.
Yep.
And it's usually more effective from a government entity to get those things changed than from like a citizen. Yeah, I, I'm, it sounds like I might be meeting with him here soon anyway, so I can talk to him too about it.
All right then, moving on to commissioner updates. Do we have any commissioner updates?
Sure. All of the bills to help counties, uh, with funding have gone down in flames. Uh, there's a, if you guys wanna read this, uh, all of the ones that have sent sales tax and even the proposal to, uh, remove the three percent property tax increase have all been voted down at this point. So there's even a proposal now to, uh, cut property tax. So we'll be interested to see how that goes. Uh, other than that, we do have the ditch board meeting on the fourteenth and we'll need at least three people to attend it. I guess I am now.
And Wanda said she was going.
Okay. Does any, if anybody else wants to go, I, I've been to enough of them. I cannot go or I could go to, we, four is fine. We just have to have three.
We have to have at least three.
And I, I think I told Karen last meeting that I would.
Okay. And then, uh, the other thing I was gonna bring. And then, uh, the other thing I was gonna bring up, and maybe Patty will too, commissioner training in, when is that, in?
April nineteenth, I think.
It's worthwhile for you guys to go to, I know I'm attending, it's, it is pretty good training. I think you've been to them before too, haven't you, Wanda?
I have.
It looks like you guys have a good agenda.
Yeah, there's a lot of good stuff on there, so. That's all I got.
The question was whether we could move that meeting or not.
You know, we can postpone the meeting till Thursday, the commission meeting.
Have it Monday or earlier or Thursday?
Well, it's at Pier, what time does it start?
Well, uh, it's better to be there the night before.
It starts eight-thirty, I'm not getting up at four and drive to Pier.
It's better to be there the night before because of the, the, the social hour, you get to, it's really nice to talk with commissioners all across the state, because we think Yankton County is only dealing with these problems, but every county, all sixty-six counties are dealing with the same issue, so it's good to, you know, just, uh, meet your fellow commissioners, I think that's important. But I would be okay with either Monday or Thursday, either one.
Thursday the only issue, but you know, it doesn't end till like three, three, three.
Okay.
It's true.
I'd do Monday, that should be fine.
I think Monday would be a preferred date.
Yep.
I'm good with Monday.
What, yeah, Monday was April, what was it, the seventeenth? Yep, that should work for me.
Nineteenth and twentieth, and I would make reservations for the eighteenth and the nineteenth.
Yep, I'm fine with Monday, six o'clock. Uh, I guess.
The seventeenth?
And.
At six?
Pardon?
April seventeenth?
Monday, April seventeenth, moving it? And, uh, Deb, we needed a motion to do that, correct? That's what you'd like?
Well, we did, it's not on the agenda, so we can't make a motion.
Okay, do it at the next meeting.
So, we would put it on the agenda next time?
Yeah.
Yep.
And, um, the eight county meeting.
Yeah, when is that, Turner County?
It's coming up.
March sixteenth?
Yep, so, yep, I'll be there.
So I need, um, who will be attending that?
I'll be, I'll be going to that.
I'm gonna have to look.
I'll go. I'll have to look into my schedule, yeah.
They're pretty, I mean, they're all the.
It's about eleven, is that about ele- eleven-thirty, twelve it starts?
Eleven-thirty, yeah.
And then, yeah, and they're usually pretty, pretty educational, so. I think that's all I have.
Anybody else? All right, um, then we need a motion to go into executive seven for personnel and poor relief.
I move we move into executive session.
I second.
Moved by Mark Wort, second by Heine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? Passes four zero. Well, I'm gonna sign it now, I'm not the chairman though, do I put vice?
I can type it in there.
Okay. Do I sign all the rest of these too?
Yep.
Wouldn't know that I signed my name a hundred times a day, would you?
I was wondering, um, do you have another email for you that I can, because I'll have you at least minutes when I get done.
Yeah, the, my office one. Send it to my office, you have that one?
No.
Okay. What is that supposed to say? I think they put that in the wrong spot.
Who you know how to do everything?
I heard, uh, I heard that the Republican meeting was a.
I didn't go, I went, I was so tired last night, I went home and crawled into bed at six-thirty, went to sleep till seven this morning. Yeah, that's. But yeah, I heard it was quite a pissing contest, but I hear that, uh, Dan was there. And those two people that were sitting here?
That's Roger Meyer and Dan, yeah.
Not sure why they showed up today.
Yankton thinks, and I was gonna add the fact that it sure seems funny that Yankton got the same breed in this pool that I've got, is Mission Hill township, he's coming. It was the township of all of Yankton and Tompkins, with a shipload of cattle. Good luck back there.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know, I'm walking.
You better get that done.
I walked from shop last night, I'm like walking to come around, and there's this possum in the middle.
Yeah, I saw that.
Was that, uh, the?
It was kinda, it was kinda flitting.
Play Creek Ditch meeting that you were talking about?
February fourteenth.
February four, okay, next week?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That reminded me that I have to put it in the paper.
Well, yeah, you gotta, yeah, that would have to be in, no.
I'll make sure, yeah, it'll get in this week.
Are you coming on, uh, fourteenth?
Yeah, I just, I just found out about it.
No, 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 let's go, I'm got up the next morning and.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, yeah, it wasn't bad this morning, something in the.
And then this winter, we look out, by white, we have to feed the damn cat. And we have to feed him in the garage. Well, I don't know how to tell you this, possums, well, cats, also. We have taken seven possums out of their garage, and they go under, they crawl up in the wall of the insulation, because it's a little warmer.
Oh.
So then you.
They make nests out of it then?
Well, they.
So they'll ruin your.
Yeah.
Well, we did, like I say, we, we pulled seven possums out, she woke, oh, we can't shoot them, there've been a fish.
No, no, no.
So.
Put them in a birdbath.
I take the neighbor's turnip inside.
But Dave Helgerson did that.
Yeah, I ran out.
Kinda ran out and it started these whole.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah, a year, years ago, because the dog had got one out and, and he went out, so he just rode it into the dog truck again, so he just throws it in the front barrel. And all of a sudden, do that, and he went right out into his room and started blow fire, blow fires all the way out. He said they went at twelve days.
Yeah.
Well, I, I texted Dave and I said, you want, you, what do you want me to do?
Yeah.
Give me a gun, I'll take care of it, or he said, just like, oh, okay, and I just kept on walking.
Josh and Peter have been suing with their house, especially with the two-year-old boy.
Oh, I bet that was a bear.
Man, that two-year-old boy, but anyway, they had a cat that had kittens, it's one of the dogs, oh, just raising hell with it. So, one day I was over there and Matt tells Charlie, he's putting them in the birdbath. It wasn't on fire, so he threw the kittens in there and they were safe from the dogs. Well, then, a couple days later, Josh was burning trash, he wanted dogs, and then after the kitten, so he grabs it, he goes. Charlie said, thank God I was there, we got it out right away. Charlie goes, what? Cause he's. The two boys were in my shop, Dean had their dog in the shower in the shop, there was a shower that she had taken. And she just drove the pickup into the shop, and the back end pickup was full of snow. Well, you put two boys in a pickup full of snow, there are snowballs, they were seeing how far up on the wall they could get the snowball. Well, she took the dog home, so the two boys are in there, like, no, we're gonna have to go outside, she gets snow. Oh, so I just grabbed a bike, I'm looking, and then Charlie goes over, makes a snowball and throws it out, and you're welcome.
Oh, God.
But, he got money for his birthday, and he was in town with his mother, and his mother apparently is totally breaking at it. Cause Charlie decided he wanted a slink shot.
Oh, God. Oh, and a good one.
And it was a good one.
I was gonna say, yeah, and.
Anyway, she said, well, you got your birthday money if that's what you want, and so he goes up, she goes, you already gotta give me that ten, and that five, and that, that other one.
Oh.
And he looked, I got all my money? She goes, well, yeah, seventeen dollars, forget it, I don't want it, I thought, yeah, there is hope for the kid, yeah.
The Johnsons coming to you?
Go home and walk.
Oh, God.
Personnel time.
Huh?
Personnel time. Shouldn't be too long, I don't think, though. But, so.
That's good, I hope so.
But yeah, that's, that was the only reason I was worried about Thursday, is because it's a four-hour drive and making it here by six o'clock, everybody would have to leave early. So Monday should work good.
I wasn't thinking of that.
But yeah, I'll go both state, eight county and the, and the workshop.
Yeah, they, uh, that, uh, workshop looks like a.
Yeah, then, looks like a good agenda. But Wanda's right, I mean, it's, it's not really even safe to be sending people at four in the morning to get there by eight-thirty or whatever. That's not really a great idea, especially in the winter.
And I don't like driving at night, yeah.
Well, yeah, in the winter too, it's dark the whole time and.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I don't know when, um, I'm sending, um, there's a new official workshop the same time. And I'm sending, um, Cassie and Alyssa, just getting, some, since they're so new.
Yeah, that's great.
Get some, I want to send Cassie to the, um.
Get some, I wanted to send Cassie to the, um.
All right, back in session, do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Clemish, second by Heiney, all in favor, say aye.
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 All against, say nay. Motion passes four zero.
No action was taken, or wait.
No action was taken on personnel, but there is a recommendation to pay poor relief. There is a recommendation to pay. CWMI twenty-two dash four dash oh eight, CWMI twenty-two dash four dash twelve, CWMI twenty-three dash one dash two, CWMI twenty-three dash one dash three, CWMI twenty-three dash one dash four, and CWMI twenty-three dash one dash five, for the aggregate amount of four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And I would make the recommendation to pay. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All any against, say nay. Motion passes four zero. Um, I have as far as items for the next meeting, that we're going to move the second meeting in April to April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, commencing at six o'clock, due to, um, other meetings that commissioners need to go to. I have item number seven, which is with Sheriff Chrissy, to approve the advertisement for food service. And item number thirteen, which is Mr. Kettering's, um, proposal as to commissioner expectations and organization. Anybody else have anything that they think we need to talk about at the next meeting? Nope?
Not at this time.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
Well, moved by Clemish, seconded.
Everybody wants to second.
Seconded by Markwart and Heiney, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody against, say nay. Motion passes four zero.
That's always the most popular.
What?